For us to get to know you and decide who we're going to endorse in this district. So that means that we're going to ask you a few questions. We may even ask each of you to ask your opponent a question. We welcome interaction between candidates, but we ask you not to interrupt each other. Also, we would ask you to bear in mind that we may not give equal time, meaning that our goal is to ask questions that we think will help elucidate this for our viewers and for Portland voters in general. And that may mean that we go down a line of inquiry that requires several follow-up questions for one candidate, which means that candidate ends up talking more than everybody else does. Don't take that as an indication necessarily of where we're headed with our endorsement decision. It's just the conversation might get interesting. That's all. I think that's it. Is there anything else in this field that I've forgotten?
No, not at all.
All right, very good. Without further ado then, we'll start on the side of the table. If you could take about two minutes and give us a little biography and why you're seeking this office.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Clifford Higgins, as I said, and I was born and raised in Portland. I'm actually on the same zip code that I went to grade school and high school in, or where I lived when I went to grade school and high school in Portland. I have worked at Metro, the regional government, for the last 17 years. I'm currently not there, working in communications and as the Title VI Civil Rights Officer. And so my job and my assignment has been, for the last 17 years or so, to engage people in decision-making and making sure that voices are heard, especially voices that had not previously been at the table before. And on the civil rights side, making sure that we are looking at decisions and projects and plans in a way that is not only engaging communities of color, but making sure that we're assessing how those projects are moving forward or how those policies would move forward and impact those communities as well.
I think one of our candidates may be outside.
You are, you say you don't work for Metro right now?
Correct. Yeah, I recently left, yeah, three months ago.
Okay, and you're unemployed right now?
Currently, yes, yes.
You previously... I guess let's just get this out. We've got two more candidates here.
Oh, no, she's just with me.
Oh, we only allow the candidates in the room.
Oh, really? Okay, sorry, that's I don't worry.
But if you wait in the lobby, we'll have her out in about 30 or 45 minutes.
That's all right, thank you.
The reason I am running for the office is, it was kind of a late decision. I didn't file until the very last day. And mostly I was looking to see who was running within my district, as well as just generally speaking. And it felt to me like there were very passionate people with very specific issues that they wanted to address, but I also wanted to add to the conversation how decisions are made and making sure that when policies are, policy proposals are brought before the council, people are really approaching it from a very clear understanding of what are the values that we're trying to represent, what are our objectives, and really making sure that there's something that we are able to track in order to make sure that those things are being successful, as well as really understand how it's impacting other communities, or each of our communities, I should say. So what I really wanted to do is go back to what the Charter Commission had put forth as far as some of the expectations or hopes for this new model of government and really making sure that we're focusing on those as we go forward.
All right.
Thank you.
Great. My name is Philippe Nab. I'm running for District Three. I'm a lawyer with 20 years of socially progressive advocacy and policy experience. I'm running on a pragmatic, results-oriented platform, and I want to, I want to address unsheltered homelessness and public safety. Unsheltered homelessness by investing in a shelter-first strategy and public safety by increasing our public safety infrastructure. As a lawyer in the courtroom, I was an eviction defense lawyer and a public defender. And what I had to do in those courtrooms is I had to be able to explain limited systems to my clients. And then I had to go out and achieve the best outcome possible in those systems. And that's what I think we need in city council. We need someone who can go explain the limitations, jurisdictions, and then go out and achieve the best outcome possible within those systems. Now, a little bit more about me. I was born in Mexico. I moved to this country when I was five, not speaking any English. I was raised in rural upstate New York by a mother who worked in the service industry. She died when I was 15. I moved in with my best family. I was lucky enough to go to college after that, and my first job out of college was working, working for the late great Senator Paul Wellstone. And, you know, that job really kind of taught me that I could live my values in my professional life, and I've done that ever since. So I went to law school. After law school, my first job was representing low-income tenants in Bushwick, Brooklyn. After that, I worked at the Bronx Defenders, which is a holistic public defender's office in the South Bronx that pioneered a notion of holistic engine defense. After that, I took a position leading and starting a new program at the Legal Aid Society. It was interdisciplinary anti-displacement program for low-income tenants in high-risk gentrification areas. I was in East New York. After that, I worked for the New York City Commission on Human Rights as a supervising civil rights prosecutor. In that position, I litigated, I think, the only case that found someone liable for immigration-based discrimination in housing. And my family and I moved out here. I took a job as the managing attorney of the Northwest Justice Project's Vancouver Neighborhood Office, right across the river, and lived in Portland in 2020. Washington State passed a statewide right to counsel for low-income tenants, and I took a position implementing that program from the start. So I am currently the eviction and reentry program director for the Washington State Office of Civil Legal Aid. I oversee a budget of approximately $30 million annually. I have implemented statewide right to counsel for low-income tenants, which I think is wildly successful. And I oversee four other major programming areas as well, spanning eviction and reentry legal services. And so I say all that in kind of painstaking detail because I know I'm talking about ending unsheltered homelessness and increasing public safety infrastructure. But if you want to know my values, my values are in the work I've done. So I believe in, you know, approaching things with a pro-equity lens, and, you know, I center the communities that I've served in my work. But I think that Portland's at an inflection point, and we need, we need serious people at a serious time. And, you know, I think that my experience, both in the courtroom and as a program lead, would make me a very strong candidate for this position.
Thank you. Harrison?
Yeah, Harrison Cass, District Three. And my biography's a little bit odd and eclectic. Right now, I'm the policy advisor to Renee Gonzalez. And before that, I was a Heffey Fellow focused on public safety with Mayor Wheeler. But I took a weird route to get there. I'm also an attorney in licensed practice in Oregon. I've worked with Oregon Federal Defenders, Youth Rights and Justice, focus on juvenile delinquents. Before law school, I worked at a group home, you know, 12-hour-a-day shifts with juvenile delinquents. So I come from a criminal defense background. I had expected to have a career as a pilot with the Air Force. I was medically discharged. I spent a lot of time still playing hockey. I played semi-professionally. I'm a dedicated guitarist. I taught myself to play, and that's still a big part of my life. Yeah, and I've lived in every socioeconomic income bracket, so I think I can relate to most of the population economically. And I'm running for office, well, my priorities are enhancing our public safety infrastructure, like Philippe said. I'm concerned with things like our staffing with the police fire and 911 call takers. I'm concerned with emergency response times. And I'm concerned with the culture of Portland and the way it is hostile towards first responders, especially our police. I'm also running to address the homelessness crisis. I don't think the status quo is acceptable. I think we've allowed it to persist in a way that is neither compassionate nor safe for the people experiencing homelessness or the rest of the city. I know it's not sustainable. It's deterring investment, and it's forcing people to leave. And meanwhile, you know, people are dying on the street. So I think those two issues deserve urgency in a way that I didn't see being addressed by the candidate field that was forming. You know, there are important issues that people are talking about, like climate justice, for example, but I wanted to really come into the race and focus on homelessness and public safety. So that's why I'm running.
What do you advise the commissioner on?
A little bit of everything, yeah. There's, so, yeah, it's a, you know, it's policies, communications, it's administrative, it's everything. But, for example, right now, we've been spending a lot of time looking at graffiti. Yeah, so strengthening laws against graffiti, trying to deter graffiti. We're starting to look at streamlining some of the inefficiencies of government.
So did you help craft the graffiti ordinance?
I did, yeah. We've been working on that for months. Yeah, it should be rolling out next week or two, and, yeah.
When's the vote going to be on that, do you know?
When is the vote?
Yeah, do we, do we have a vote scheduled on that yet, or?
We're working on that. I think we're working, I think there's one member of council, we're still trying to pin down, not his vote, but his timing, so.
Understood. All right, great. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Kent Langrever. I was born in Selwood. I graduated from Lincoln High School. In between, my family moved all over the country, so I've been exposed to a lot of cities other than Portland, so I say Portland's the best, speaking from experience. Went to Oregon State University. I spent 31 years in the Oregon Army National Guard. I started out working in, I was family in a family-owned business, and we manufactured computers, and this is the mid-'80s, that back when I actually assembled the boards, the computer boards, myself. Went on to work for the, full-time for the National Guard, and most recently, I worked for the state in OSHA, where I'm a scientific instrument technician. All of that is public service, except for the, working for the family. And I think I'm going to steal someone else's words. We're at an inflection point in city government, and I want to make that happen and make sure it's successful. The bureau system was not working. We need to make sure that, for instance, people keep talking about committees. We don't want to recreate the bureau system and call them committees. That just didn't work. We are where we are because the bureaus were dysfunctional. I want to make sure that happens. I have this idea that, that the council should work on consensus or compromise. If there's an 11-to-1 vote in council, that means that 55 denizens of Portland have been disenfranchised for that particular vote. And I think if we work together as makers of policy and not as leveled-up politicians, that we can, we can reach consensus or compromise.
Okay, thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Mrs. Ahlman Alsmann. I use "she" pronounced. I am a lifelong southeast Portland resident, so I've lived in southeast Portland my whole life. My family came to the U.S. in 1997. They first, well, they were refugees from Somalia. They ran a refugee camp in Kenya. They went to L.A. first, stayed there for about a couple of years. My dad realized that it wasn't a good neighborhood, so, and it was really hard for him to purchase a home there, so he moved to Portland. And then they had me and my twin brother. The house that we live in right now, we lived in theirs, I've lived there since I was two years old, and it's right behind the Mac station, the 82nd Mac Station, and then it's also right by the freeway, and then it's also right in front of like a dairy factory. So when my family moved to Portland, my mom developed asthma. My twin brother and I, we also developed asthma and other health issues. And as I got older, I realized a lot of it was because of our environment. So my top priority is really climate change, and I feel like right now, our city council doesn't really have a sense of urgency around climate change. Southeast Portland is an urban heat island, so we have less true canopy. There's a lot of waste facilities in our neighborhoods. Our transportation infrastructure isn't the best. And I just feel like East Portland and Southeast Portland is really bad environmentally. So that's kind of where my passion for environmental justice came. I think our new city council really needs someone to fight for more urgency and advocacy around climate, around climate change. We have current plans, like the Climate Emergency Work Plan, we have PISA, and I think we can always do more than PISA, obviously making sure that PISA continues to stay funded and, you know, it's the funding allocated where it doesn't go towards other projects or towards other issues that aren't really related to climate change. And then I think we need to make sure that we're following through on our, on the Climate Emergency Work Plan. I think a huge part of it is also, East Portland and Southeast Portland has a huge population of immigrants and refugees and low-income folks, working-class folks. So at city council, I think it's really important that members are meeting with those communities and making sure that their voices are heard when it comes to like what we can do to mitigate the impacts of climate change. I'm also a small business owner. I just opened a, one of the only late-night cafes in downtown Portland.
Really?
Yeah, it's called Above Ground Coffee.
Okay.
Right above the sneaker store. I opened it with my brother and a friend of mine, lived up in for about five months. I'm also in my senior year at Portland State, studying community development. Throughout my high school years, since I was a freshman until my first year of college, I was on the front of my youth commission, specifically in the Youth Against Violence Committee. So we worked on a lot of projects and, or we worked on initiatives around combating violence in our neighborhoods. I was also an intern for three years at Metro under the Waste, Property and Environmental Services Department, which is where I also learned about like our waste management system and other climate justice-related projects. And, yeah, that's a little bit about me. And, yeah, I'm running because I really think we need someone who cares about climate change in our town.
Good reason. I'm just a little curious about what made you decide you wanted to open a late-night cafe in downtown Portland. That's a, that's a counterintuitive maneuver at this moment.
Yeah, no, it's, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think Portland deserves late-night spaces that aren't clubs or like alcohol, like bars. I'm young, I know a lot of other young people who don't drink and who don't, you know, want to, like who want a nightlife that isn't, or like even just a place to study. We're right by two universities. So, yeah, it's a little tough, especially being, we're technically Pearl District, but we're more so Old Town. But I've always loved coffee. I had a passion for coffee. I was born in Racers, I think that's where that came from. It is tough, I think, being a small business owner in downtown right now, but I, I think it's a testament to my love for Portland and, you know, despite everything that's going on, I think in a few years, downtown will be fine, hopefully.
So, as all of you, thank you for answering, for elaborating. I'm just fascinated by opening businesses in downtown right now. All of you, I'm sure, are aware that this is based on the new formation of this council, how it's going to work, is that this is going to be a legislative position essentially, that managerial work is going to be handled by the city administrator, and that you will essentially be legislators. So I would like to ask each of you, starting this way and going the other direction, having started the other way, if you could tell me what the first resolution is that you would like to bring to city council for your colleagues to consider.
The first resolution, I would say, well, going back to climate justice, I think making, I live right on 82nd Avenue, not right on, but I live on 87th and I'll see right by 82nd Avenue. I think, and right now, that street is, you know, there's a lot of work being done on it, so I would say making sure that we have specific policy on, on the transportation there, like making sure that there is efficient transportation. Right now, there's a 72 bus line, and it's currently one of the most unreliable bus lines. So, yeah, policy on making sure that, that project, or there's going to be projects, making sure that it's efficient and reliable.
Great, thank you.
First resolution, in fact, I'd like to pass it before we elect a president, is, I want a weak president instead of a strong president. They who control the agenda control the council, so I'd like the, each of the council members periodically be able to add an agenda item, no bar is hold. And I'd like to, well, I want a weak president, and that would be the first resolution.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to bump up the police hiring cap. I think we're at 881 right now. I would like to see allocation for more funding for more police officers, yes, somewhere more in the neighborhood of, you know, 1,200, 1,300. We need to get there incrementally, but I would like to start that process immediately.
Okay, just, oh, no, sorry. So, are, we already have the money for the cops, we just can't fill that?
Yeah, we, we have like a hiring cap.
Sure, we're not at the hiring cap.
Well, we're not. We need to get there, and we also need to start making room and start.
But essentially, but making that argument, essentially what you're saying is you just want to give the police force more money, which they can spend however they want.
I want them to spend it on hiring. I want them to streamline the hiring process and the recruitment process, and, yeah.
I guess what I'm asking is, what, if you could actually make a proposal that would result in a police force hiring more officers now, what would it be? Because it just get, how would giving them more money result in hiring more officers right now?
Well, there's a cap, there's a hiring cap right now at 881. I want that cap raised. It's not necessarily, it's not about the funding, it's about, it's about the cap. Like, there's a, there's a rule right now, the caps, how many cops we can have in Portland. I want that cap higher.
I think what he's saying is that, isn't there like 80 to 100 vacancies?
Last time I checked, there was plenty of vacancies. Again, I haven't checked recently.
There's going to be more vacancies. We have a huge retirement month coming up, so I understand your point. Yeah, we need to get to that 881 cap. We need to bust through that, so that's not still completely inadequate.
Okay, sure. And I think, like, I'm not sure there would be consensus in the room that we need to go past that cap, but let's say for specific argument that we do. I guess my question then would be, how do you get to 881 even?
It's going to be, it's going to be difficult. I think a big part of that is changing the culture so recruitment is easier. Culture in Portland, I believe that starts from the top-down with leadership, that stands by first responders, that's part of it. We can also, we need to look into opening a domestic, domestic as in Portland-centered training facility. We export our training to DPSST and Salem. I would like to see that option here. We're the largest, you know, law enforcement agency in the state. It's odd that we don't have a domestic training facility.
Thank you.
Just to answer, to talk a little bit about that, that pipeline issue, you know, I oversee a statewide right to counsel for low-income tenants in Washington, and like everyone's aware, in public defenders, you know, we have trouble finding attorneys that'll fill those, those positions, especially in places like Yakima and Benton County. And so we, we saw that problem, and what we did is we identified pipelines that we could, we could make into the practice. And so we started what is called the Housing Justice Collaborative at the SU School of Law, and we have another clinical position starting at Gonzaga School of Law to meet that need. And, you know, we've explored fellowships in rural areas to have that. And so I think that, you know, I look at the, the Portland police salary, and it shocks me that there aren't more people who are applying to that. That's a really good upper-middle-class salary. And, you know, it seems like if you're investing in pipelines, that's a smart place to start. You know, you could go to Portland State and start investing. I mean, those are, those are really good pipelines. Sorry, I just. So as far as what legislation I would introduce, I think, you know, it would, it would be, you know, I think one of, one of the most vexing issues and part of the reason that I threw my hat in the rings, I, I think I, you know, I think, oh, let me give it some context. For me, people living on the street is not the true humanity position. I feel like I saw a lot of candidates running as kind of like the, the pro-dignity, pro-humanity position was people being allowed to be on the street and live their lives. To me, you have to bring people into society. So my first legislation, the first thing I would propose, would be a, essentially a notice of intent to create a shelter-first environment, an environment where we have shelter for every individual, and that's the goal. You know, I think we, and we, we mix up homelessness and unsheltered homelessness. I say this all the time, New York City has 800,000 homeless people, but virtually zero unsheltered homeless people. The path is clear, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. There are cities all over the country who have addressed this issue, and I think it's the pro-humanity choice, you know. People should have shelter. You should bring people into society. And so I'd like to see a clear and coherent plan that isn't a housing-first model that's been in place for 30 years and has led us to this current crisis.
So we had candidates for mayor in two hours ago. Your boss is here. A gentleman named Keith Wilson.
Yeah.
Sounded a lot like what you're saying right now. Have you looked at his plan?
I, I've, I've heard him speak before. I mean, I speak from a place of having done eviction prevention work in New York City for 15 years. I did a live tenant rights call-in show, like I intimately know the New York City shelter system because you can't win every case. And I've sued that shelter system many times, and it's not perfect, but the reality is that you need to bring people in, right? And, and you're not going to be able to meet everyone's needs right away, but that first step is shelter.
So it sounds like you're not saying that you endorse Keith's plan per se, but that like you're sort of at least theoretically.
I'm interested.
Yeah, you're overlapping on what.
Yeah, I'm interested. I'm interested. I think, I think there's nuances, I don't know of his.
I'm going to ask you, as I've been doing, to elaborate on this more, because, I mean, New York has a major difference in Portland in that city gets below freezing for much of the year, which kind of forces people to find shelter. I mean, statistics show that, you know, I think it was the majority of people who went asked if they want shelter on the streets of Portland would say no. So is your strategy to force people into shelter, or like how would you actually solve this?
Yeah, so, you know, as a public defender in the South Bronx, I saw people coming through the system for sleeping in parks and things like that, right, trespassing. You know, ultimately, you have to be able to set up the rules, and then people have to follow them. And I, I think that that intervention is less harmful than people living in addiction and crisis on the street. And so, you know, if you have a shelter bed and you tell someone you have to go to that shelter bed, you know, obviously, no one wants to criminalize poverty. I have a very intimate understanding of how that system works. That said, you know, letting someone live with addiction and crisis on the street without intervening, and ultimately, you know, that's what I felt about Measure 110, like we need to be able to intervene in someone's life because, and I mean this, everyone's making the best decision they can for themselves at that time. So if you're addicted to fentanyl and living on the street, you know, the very best thing, most rational thing you can do is probably try to make the pain go away by getting more fentanyl. That's, we have to, as a society, say, this is an intervention point. We're going to bring you in.
Yes, thank you. As far as a resolution, I haven't written out an agenda for, for what kind of policies I'd immediately put forward. I guess the question that I would, I guess the thing that I would want to see, and again, I haven't pursued whether or not this is a piece of legislation that I could actually craft easily, is I would like us to, I would like the city of Portland and Multnomah County to do a better job of coordinating what our actual goals are and what are the actual results that are happening. I think that the Joint Office of Homeless Services does a great job of trying to implement a compassionate process in order to get people from, from homelessness or a lot of times preventing homelessness in order to stabilize where they, where they're able to then be part of the society, like you mentioned, Philippe. It is... It is, I would not get to the point, I, I question where Keith Wilson's plan is as far as that, that element of forcing people into shelter, or forcing people either based on their criminal behavior, or mental health behavior, or addiction, whatever that is. I am not entirely certain that we've hit that tipping point, though, that everybody who wants to be in shelter is getting shelter, and is having a clear path from shelter, moving into, to stable housing. I would like to see us, as a city, as a compassionate city, to build more of the Safe Rest Villages that, where people can have communities of recovery and communities of support, where they are getting that, being part of a group that is co-supporting of each other. A friend of mine was talking to a woman, a younger woman downtown who had gone through addiction treatment, and she was one of the people that said, no, I don't wanna do it again, because as soon as she was done with addiction treatment, there was no place for her to then continue forward with her recovery. And I think that that's, that, that, those breaks in the system is where we need to get to before we get to a question of forcing anybody to do something that they are more resistant to.
Can I respond to that very quickly? I, I just think that, you know, society's not gonna be able to meet everybody's needs, and I think part of, you know, being in office is leveling with people, what can we do? We're not going to make every person, for whatever reason, decide that this is the right choice, but in order for our city to flourish, we need to address some shelter camping, and, and that's gotta be an outcome, and you can do it compassionately, and my background shows that I've done this work on all the ends of the system, but the answer isn't to just say, it's cool, you do you. I don't think that's the pro-humanity choice, some people need help.
Okay. Ms. Altman, I wanna ask, ask you this question, but it'll be for everyone as well. Should the city of Portland stay in a partnership with the Joint Office of Homeless Services? I ask the question because there's been great friction between the city and the county on the joint office, and whether or not to stay inside that partnership is going to be a major decision facing the council, so I'll ask you first.
I would say yes, I don't know too much about the friction, but I do know that the Joint Office of Homeless Services has done a lot of work to mitigate a lot of the, like, just the homelessness crisis, and I know that they also work closely with a lot of CBOs and community partners and organizations to, to, you know, fight, not fight, but to solve a lot of the issues. So I think it's really important for the city to work closely with community partners and CBOs, people who are actually doing underground work with that the homelessness community, to solve a lot of those issues. I would say yes.
Okay. Ken?
Well, I've heard a little bit about the friction, but it seems to me it's a communication problem, and we need to work on that, and if that's restructuring the agreement, then so be it, but I think that's been our problem, is that we each take positions and don't really listen to the other talking. That tent, the tent thing was not good, we should've gotten the tents. But the city may say, no, that's bad. Anyhow, yeah, communication, increasing communication, however that comes about.
I'm open to staying in the relationship, I'm skeptical that it can work, I want for it to work, I don't want the city to have to take on the responsibilities that the county is currently undertaking, that would be a difficult transition potentially, but the city does need to assert itself a little bit more in upholding the expectations that the county's gonna fulfill. We've also entered this, this weird cyclical thing with the tents and tarps, you know, taxpayers are funding the distribution of tents and tarps, and then also funding the cleanup on the backend, that's not appropriate, so things like that, we need to, we need to keep a closer eye on the way the joint office is operating. And like, there's a lookback period coming up next month for the, the 90-day IGA, you know, things like that, more, more accountability, more mechanisms to hold them accountable.
Great.
So, you know, I think in the law, we, we deal with jurisdiction a lot, right, where your, your client really wants to do something or say something in one context, but you can't, because in that courtroom, that's not, that's not applicable, and, you know, to me, I hear so much about communication, collaboration, but I think accountability has to be the word, and I think in making our, our rules, our regulation, our laws and our agreements, we need to do a better job at not just communicating, but actually having clear accountability. And so I would be open, as long as we could, to staying in, as long as we could have clear accountability in those, and I, and I think that's across the board, because I think if you look at county, if you look at metro, if you look at city, that's one of our biggest problems, we have too many cooks in the kitchen without a clear accountability, and the voters deserve to know who's accountable for what, who should they hold accountable? So it's a maybe.
Do you trust the county's data? When, I mean, the county does release data, and I, that would be how you hold them accountable, do you trust that data?
I don't have any reason not to, I mean, I certainly, I do that in my, in my day job, we have a data dashboard that we share out all of the data that we have, and we find issues with it all the time, so I mean, I would, I would parse over that, and, you know, I think that, you know, it's, being data-driven and accountable is, is paramount to government.
Great.
Yes, I think that the partnership itself is good on the staff level, I think that the issue has been with the joint office is that Multnomah County and City of Portland are at sometimes cross purposes, and so there's, they're trying to address issues that, similar to the tent situation that Harrison brought up, and there isn't that partnership that's on the level of elected to elected, and I would like to see more accountability, as you're saying, to, from the, ask our council to hold their commission more accountable as far as what are you measuring, what are, what are our actual goals, are we in alignment with what is going to happen here? I think that the challenge that I've seen with Multnomah County is they are, it seems, from a resident perspective, it seems like the county is protecting the smaller cities and the unincorporated portions of the county, and making homelessness a Portland problem versus addressing it on a county level. Some of the issues as far as giving to the diversion center, deflection center, that, that debate was really questionable to me, that we would be help busing people down to check in to someplace in inner-city Portland, rather than having services that are available in east of Portland or in east Portland. So the joint office, yes, but there needs to be more collaboration, coordination of what are the goals between the city of Portland and Multnomah County on, on an elected level.
Okay, Luke, it's your questions?
Do we wanna do the rapid-fire ones, or?
Sure, you got those in front of you?
Okay, you guys, same, similar question, the last one, but we actually, I'm gonna ask you to answer this in like one or two words, so I mean, kind of briefly cover this. So the question, do we have too many police, the right amount of police right now, or should we have fewer police? Start again.
You're, you have two options that were the same.
Sorry, there's two, oh, like, do we have the right amount of police right now? Do we want more, do we want less?
I think we have the right amount.
More.
We need more, actually.
Don't know.
Oh, no, no.
Likely more, likely more, but I wanna see data.
Okay.
We need more.
Okay. And then, do you support the, like, the Clinton triangle, city is putting up these tiny home task sites they're calling around, do you support that, and you wanna see more of them, or do you wanna get rid of them and do something different?
Yes, support.
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 Support and additional coordinated shelter, right? Support.
Remember any other rapid ones?
Um, yes, I do, and actually, I'm especially interested in your answer on this because of your climate justice interests. Do you agree or disagree with Commissioner Carmen Rubio's effort to take money from PSEF and put it into existing bureaus?
I disagree.
Disagree.
We need to take PSEF money and, yeah.
You agree. Yeah, you agree.
Agree.
I disagree.
Great. I am trying to remember what the other ones were, I can pull it up, hang on a second, sorry about this.
You haven't done enough of these interviews.
Apparently not, I don't know.
You know why I'm so fair, sorry reporter, right?
Which member of city council do you feel has done the most for this city in the past two years?
I do like Carmen, a lot. She has brought forth a voice that is from being on the ground as far as dealing with issues of the people that are most impacted by policy or lack of policy, investment or lack of investment. And I think that she is somebody who keeps her head down, tries to do the work, and hasn't tried to show that she's shooting for higher office, even though she's running for mayor now, I get it, but that's, that's where I feel like she's been the last couple of years.
Which commissioner?
I'm actually gonna go with the county commissioner, Sharon Marion, Marine?
Sharon Meyer.
I, I just think that she's been pretty spot-on in her criticisms and holding the county's feet to the fire about things that are, they're doing wrong.
Okay.
Renee.
That's perfectly appropriate. Also, we have no desire for you to lose your job.
It's on tape here. It was on tape.
I can't even name all five.
Okay, sorry.
Carmen.
Okay. Based on your knowledge of city hall, what is the one bureau or department? I guess there's no departments, there's offices, there's bureaus and offices. What is the one bureau or office that you would most like to see audited?
Oh, um.
Doesn't necessarily mean you think it is like being mismanaged, but you would like to see the, open it up and see the inside numbers.
Um, that's, wow, whose numbers would I look at? It probably is the police department, I'd like to know where we're at with overtime pay, administrative pay, and where all the money is going for, that we've been providing to the, to the police bureau thus far.
I'm gonna agree, you know, I, I think, I, as much as I think we need to build out our public safety infrastructure, I'm deeply skeptical of, of law enforcement as a public defender, and, and, you know, I think that, you know, if we're not getting, if we're paying for 881 and we're not getting 100, where is that money going? Is it all going to overtime? Are some people getting rich on that? Let's, let's look at it.
I'm gonna take a look at the Bureau of Human Resources.
I'm gonna end up with the, the police bureau, but I kinda like to see the forestry people, I just found out that we had a heritage tree manager, and I wanna know why.
Good. Urban forestry is a good choice.
I would say the police department as well.
Okay.
And I have one more rapid-fire question, they're so not rapid-fire this afternoon, sorry.
I was gonna say it's Friday, and then I was like, it's not.
I do like it's Friday.
I think.
It was the heat for last day.
I think we'll actually move on to the, to the fun question.
Yeah, we got a fun question for all of you.
Hmm.
What are you gonna ask?
Sure. The fun question is, what were you most known for in high school? People have said that they were varsity athletes, no one has actually really bragged that they were varsity athletes, they've more said that they were on the varsity team but never saw them in a playing time, that kind of thing. Some folks have talked about being voted most likely to succeed, or being a nerd, or like floating from different table in the cafeteria to different table in cafeteria. Every answer about this is interesting, and they're all valid, but it's a great way to get to know you a little bit better.
Wow, that's pretty intense. Well, I will say that, like I said, I grew up in Portland Public Schools, and I was one of the few people who were not white or not black, and I'm Filipino and Native American, and so in, by the time I got to high school, I was more based on other issues, very much kind of closed off, and except for a few, a few folks that were good friends of mine.
That's a good question, I don't have a great answer for, but I was the captain of the JB football team, and also, you know, had bleached blonde hair, pink manic panic, and smoked a pack a day, so I, I was like a punk rocker, but I played football until a certain point.
What, what position did you play?
Tackle.
I was a varsity hockey player, but I think what I was most known for was being a very dedicated hair metal fanatic, and that affected my stylistic choices, including my hair, I was voted best hair, I had a mullet down to my shoulders at high school, so.
I could see that.
Yeah. It was different, 2004, so it was out of, out of vogue, but.
I think mullets are kinda bad.
They are.
I was the audiovisual guy, the AV guy, so I was one of the progenitors of the geeks. It was a long time ago.
Great, thank you.
This was not that long ago, but I was always known as like the activist, or most of the, work for president or something.
Nice. You know, because you were, you came in a couple minutes behind everybody else, we didn't get your, your date of birth, could we get that now?
Oh, yeah, 10/17/2001.
10/17/2001. Well, thank you to all five of you for taking the time, we really appreciate it, and enjoy getting to know you.
Thank you.
Thanks.